Subscribe to the William Pace Show YouTube channel. Be sure to click the bell and give us the thumbs up. Thank you.
The William Pace Show through the years has been a beacon of light in the Midwest, taking you to such destinations as the Navy Pier, the Palmer Hilton Palace Hotel, the German Village, the Showboat Majestic Theater, the Ohio Village, and the Crone Conservatory. There's always something cooking in the kitchen on the William Pace Show. Some of the biggest stars, entertainers, and political figures like B.B. King, Jimmy Walker, Bob Carlyle, Patty Austin, Mr. T., Whitley Phipps, and Congressman Tony Hall have appeared on the William Pace Show. Now, without further ado, we proudly present the William Pace Show on C-A-TV, coming to you from the heart of the Midwest. The William Pace Show, asking the questions you want to ask, getting the answers everyone wants to know. It's a new season of the William Pace Show. We're raising the bar with more commitment to educate, inform, encourage, inspire, empower, and help you have your best life. Everyone deserves to have their best life. I'm just staying in the course. Here we go. The following is produced and paid for by Barton Productions. Barton Productions producing quality television programming for 11 years. In addition, we produce documentaries, corporate videos, commercials, and much more. Call Barton Productions at (275) 0150. Now, without further ado, we proudly present the William Pace Show. Hello, I'm William Pace. Thanks so much for tuning us in tonight. My guests are Dr. Pat Kenny from J&amp;K Associates and Commissioner Dean Lovelace. But as you know, we always start the show off by reading letters from the viewers, and I just love this part of the show and would like for you to write. To write to the William Pace Show, write to PO Box 3644, Dayton, Ohio, (45401). If your letter is chosen to be read on the air, you'll receive a gift from the William Pace Show. Tonight, we're only reading just one letter, and it comes from Margaret of Tip City, and she says, "Dear William, you are truly the shining light in Dayton. Your show is so refreshing. I thoroughly enjoy the restaurant and business segments of your show. I can see great potential in you and your show. With continued hard work, you could become a major star. I would like so much to see that for you. Sincerely, Margaret, your devoted fan, Tip City." Well, thank you so much for writing, Margaret. We're going to send you a gift certificate to Esther Price Fine Chocolates. Coming up next, conversation with Dr. Pat Kenny of J&amp;K Associates. Stay with us. The William Pace Show through the years has been a beacon of light in the Midwest, taking you to such destinations as the Navy Pier, the Palmer Hilton Palace Hotel, the German Village, the Showboat Majestic Theater, the Ohio Village, and the Crone Conservatory. There's always something cooking in the kitchen on the William Pace Show. Some of the biggest stars, entertainers, and political figures like B.B. King, Jimmy Walker, Bob Carlyle, Patty Austin, Mr. T., Whitley Phipps, and Congressman Tony Hall have appeared on the William Pace Show. Now, without further ado, we proudly present the William Pace Show on C-A-TV, coming to you from the heart of the Midwest.
Subscribe to the William Pace Show YouTube channel. Be sure to click the bell and give us the thumbs up. Thank you.
On our business segment tonight, we're spotlighting J&amp;K Associates, and here to tell us more are Dr. Pat Kenny and Mary Beth Wiss. Thank you both for coming on tonight.
Thank you, William.
J&amp;K has been around a long time. How did you get started?
I got started when I was working at Rice State University, and I started doing small speaking engagements for the university, and it sort of grew out of that and then grew into workshops and seminars. So, that's what my business, we do workshops and seminars for human resource development, and this is to train employees to do their best at their work.
Now, your work takes you all over the country. What are some of the cities you've been to in America as well as abroad?
Oh, gosh, almost every large city and wherever there's an army, an air force, a Navy base, because my biggest client is the federal government. So, about 99% of my work is for the federal government. So, almost every state in the United States, and overseas, do a lot of work in Japan, Tokyo, a lot of work in Korea. Used to do a lot more there than I do now. I'm planning on going another Far East tour later on in the summer. Guam, Aviano Air Force Base in Italy, which is close to Venice, and that's probably my most favorite city with Tokyo being the second in the whole world.
So, you get to travel a lot?
Mm-hmm. Go to Cairo, Egypt. I'll be going to Panama City, Panama, Central America, coming up here at least February 20th for a month.
A month.
Doing some work for the Panama Canal Commission and for Fort Clayton.
Let's talk about, for the viewers, exactly what human resource development training is.
Okay, if anything, to help an employee become a better employee. Do a lot of management training, a lot of support staff training, and also just general training, such as briefing techniques, effective writing techniques, and that's one of our largest workshops, is effective writing techniques, diversity training, do a lot of diversity training. And what's another large one, Mary Beth?
Active listening is a good one.
Yeah. So, that area.
How many instructors do you employ?
We have between, I think, about 70 and getting close to 80 now. And that's instructors. We have 10 typists that type, and then, of course, my office manager and my bookkeeper. I have a website keeper that takes care of our website, keeps that up and running and up to date.
So, recently, you received, you were listed in a news magazine, I believe.
Yes, the Business News, 1999 book of lists, and it lists like the largest hospitals in Miami Valley. I got listed under the 20, in the top 25 women-owned businesses in the Miami Valley area.
How did that make you feel?
Oh, that was good.
It was quite an honor.
That was good. Certainly, it was an honor. Yeah.
You know, I'm always, this is a question I asked a lot to women in business, is it pretty hard for women to even exist in business today?
Absolutely.
Why?
Absolutely. We're still looked at as like a second-class citizen and...
Even today?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think something that's unique about my business is, as you can see, Mary Beth is female, my bookkeeper is female, but in the classroom, the majority of our instructors are male. I have some female instructors, but it seems like the males will bring back the better critiques after the class.
I see.
They don't get some of the flack from the students that the female, they just gauge a female or rate a female instructor a little bit closer than they do a male. So, the majority of my instructors are male.
Okay, okay. Mary Beth, what's a day like in the office of J&amp;K Associates? What's a day like, a typical day?
Very fast-paced.
Fast-moving.
Yeah, there's a, the phones are constantly ringing. I think if it's not someone wanting to call and schedule a course, it's someone calling to get information about the courses. It's, I have to contact the instructors as far as looking them to teach the courses, setting up their travel. In addition to that, we're trying to get all the typists organized and all their work in and proofed and things ready to print and ship, and so there's never a dull moment.
Now, what is your background? How did you come to this position with J&amp;K Associates?
Well, my, my background, I was in elementary education major, and I taught for a while and then decided to have a family, and I decided to stay home with my family rather than to have them in daycare. And then after a while, I got a little bored and started looking for something to keep me busy, and found out about Dr. Kenny and started typing for her, and it grew from there. I became, because I lived so close, worked out really well, that I was able to walk up and work with her a lot, so.
Great. So, you've worked primarily in the office, or do you do a combination of both, working in the office and from your home?
I do a combination of both, but majority of my work is in the office.
Okay, great. There's more with J&amp;K Associates when we return. Stay with us. The William Pace Show through the years has been a beacon of light in the Midwest, taking you to such destinations as the Navy Pier, the Palmer Hilton Palace Hotel, the German Village, the Showboat Majestic Theater, the Ohio Village, and the Crone Conservatory. There's always something cooking in the kitchen on the William Pace Show. Some of the biggest stars, entertainers, and political figures like B.B. King, Jimmy Walker, Bob Carlyle, Patty Austin, Mr. T., Whitley Phipps, and Congressman Tony Hall have appeared on the William Pace Show. Now, without further ado, we proudly present the William Pace Show on C-A-TV, coming to you from the heart of the Midwest.
Subscribe to the William Pace Show YouTube channel. Be sure to click the bell and give us the thumbs up. Thank you.
We're back with Dr. Pat Kenny and her bookkeeper. They both are from J&amp;K Associates. I want to talk a little bit about, this is the 25th year of you being in business.
That's right. We're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year, yes.
Is that like a milestone for you or...
A milestone, yes, and we're offering a lot of workshops at a little bit reduced price just because we have been in business for 25 years.
That is a feat in itself, isn't it, to say that you've kept the business going for 25 years? How many people can say that, you know?
I don't know. I guess the first five years were the roughest, and I would tell any new entrepreneur, male or female, you make it through the first five years, you pretty much have it made then.
Why? Why is that? Because you have to set up?
Well, you're learning, right, and every bit of money that comes in, you don't pay yourself, it has to put it right back into the company.
Into the company.
And this you must do for at least five years.
So, you have to build your business up first?
That's right.
And invest in your business?
Yes.
Then your business will provide for you.
There's the times I thought, boy, it's starvation time.
Starvation time. Well, you know, with me being on a diet, you know, I feel as if I am starving almost, but I want to ask you, how many workshops do you currently offer?
We have over 300, probably getting closer to 400 now, various workshops, and they run in length from one-day workshop to five-day workshop.
Now, what qualifications do you look for in your instructors? Do they have to meet a certain criteria, or do they have to have certain background, education?
Yes, yes. The majority of my instructors have PhDs.
PhDs.
The rest have master's degrees. I have, I think, two or three with just a bachelor's degree. And another prerequisite is that they must have either worked for the government or been in the military.
I see.
Because, as I said, 99% of my work is with the federal government, and so you have to walk or to talk.
Oh.
That the government does, and everything's a little bit unique. So, when you teach a course, you have to teach it from the government viewpoint.
Let me ask you, the instructors that are working with you, they're all part-time?
All part-time.
Okay, and how do they go about, do you go searching for them, or do they come recommended, or do, how, what's the procedure? How do you go about selecting?
All of those, all of those. Some people will say, I know a person that would really be a good instructor for you, and so I get a lot of leads on employees that way. Another way, when I'm teaching a class, and I still teach a few classes, so when I'm teaching a class myself, I'm constantly looking for someone, you can tell that personality, because to be a good instructor, not only do you have to know the material, but you have to really like people. And so, I get a lot of my instructors right out of the classroom. The last time I was in Central America, I thinking about hiring two of my students that were in the classroom. They had the qualifications and the education qualifications, and one had been in the Navy, retired Colonel, and, no, not Colonel, a Lieutenant, retired Lieutenant in the Navy, and the others are retired Major in the Army.
Are you still personally involved with the instructors, working with them on a personal level?
Yes, but I'm not in a classroom near as much as I used to be. When I first started, it was a one-woman show.
A one, I remember one time you told me it was a one-woman, a dog and pony show or something like that.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
I want to talk now with Miriam Moore, who is also the bookkeeper for your company. Welcome to the show. I wanted to ask you, what is your background?
My background is in accounting. I don't have a degree in accounting, but it is accounting. I worked for the Internal Revenue Service for 33 years, and I have a total of 36 years of government service.
Wow, so if anyone would know how to run the business or keep the books, I guess it would be you, huh?
I'm not sure about that. I do the best I can.
She's good, she's good.
Great. So, what is it like to work at J&amp;K Associates? What's a day like in the office of J&amp;K Associates?
Well, I think Mary Beth pretty much explained it in that it's very busy. The phones are ringing, there are vendors coming to either deliver material or to perform some other service, so it's really busy and hectic. I primarily work one day a week, probably five or six hours one day a week. However, during the month of January, I'm working practically two or three hours every day because of year-end reports and W-2s to get out and 1099s for vendors and getting year-end statements prepared so that a tax return can be prepared. So, January is a busy month for me.
What do you find most interesting about the work at J&amp;K Associates?
It's unique in that the people that I deal with are all over the country, and then there are invoices for whatever comes into that one place, and I'm able to pay bills and pay employees and send out checks, and it runs rather smoothly. But we're dealing with probably 70, 80 people a month.
So, the work that you're doing at J&amp;K Associates is extraordinary in a sense that you find, you know, a woman as an owner of the business, working with a number of employees, working all across the country and abroad. How often do you see that? It's not, it's not a everyday kind of work.
Right, and I think one more thing that maybe sets mine apart is everyone is, works on part-time.
That is unique in itself, too.
But I get a lot of really good people because just as Mary Beth, my office manager, she has two small children, and she didn't want a full-time job because she wanted to be on with their children. So, this is why she can come and go.
Best of both worlds.
Miriam is retired from the IRS, and so she can come and go. If she doesn't want to come in on Wednesday, she'll come in on Thursday, and so it gives them the opportunity to have their own life and still do some work and keep busy.
Thank you both for coming on tonight. We have a box for you, Dr. Kenny of Esther Price Fine Chocolates. It's Dayton's best.
Then I'll have to go on a diet like you.
Yeah, and for Miriam and Mary Beth, we have gift certificates to Limber's Window Treatments. There's more to come on the William Pace Show. Stay with us. The William Pace Show through the years has been a beacon of light in the Midwest, taking you to such destinations as the Navy Pier, the Palmer Hilton Palace Hotel, the German Village, the Showboat Majestic Theater, the Ohio Village, and the Crone Conservatory. There's always something cooking in the kitchen on the William Pace Show. Some of the biggest stars, entertainers, and political figures like B.B. King, Jimmy Walker, Bob Carlyle, Patty Austin, Mr. T., Whitley Phipps, and Congressman Tony Hall have appeared on the William Pace Show. Now, without further ado, we proudly present the William Pace Show on C-A-TV, coming to you from the heart of the Midwest.
Subscribe to the William Pace Show YouTube channel. Be sure to click the bell and give us the thumbs up. Thank you.
A man who does it all in one day, my guest is Commissioner Dean Lovelace. Thanks so much for coming on tonight. Good to see you. Happy New Year to you.
Well, happy New Year to you, too. Good being here, good being here.
Tell me, do you have any New Year's goals and resolutions?
No, I, I really don't develop those. I am, I'm just always thankful that I'm alive and thankful that, you know, that my family's blessed, that it's really to be together, so I have these kind of personal resolutions for myself, and thankful that I got the health and the energy to kind of do all the things that I do, so that's, that's all I do.
I know you're very involved with the Poverty Reduction Task Force. Want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, it's the, it's a group that was pulled together back in 1995 as a result of really an environmental scan by me in terms of looking at the kind of qualitative life factors that exist here in Dayton, Ohio. And Dayton has a poverty rate of like 26.5%, which is pretty high for a city that has about 100,000 persons in it. So, we've been struggling for the last two or three years, kind of looking at ways that we can reduce poverty here in Dayton, and there's a number of initiatives that have been developed as a result of our kind of coming together. And really, the task force is made up of folks from not only the Board of Education, but the anti-poverty agency called SCOLP, there's the Dayton Urban League, there's the United Way Representatives, and one of the things that we did last, last April was to pass a living wage resolution, which really requires all those vendors and contractors that the city of Dayton works with to use their best efforts to pay their employees a living wage, assuming that they aren't paying a living wage already. It also requires that the city of Dayton look inside its own self to see whether we have some employees that are making less than $7 an hour and for us to bring those persons up to $7 an hour by the year 2000. So, that resolution passed with the full, you know, support of the city commission as well as the mayor, and so we're really happy for that. As well as the Chamber of Commerce has agreed to alert its membership that if they aren't paying their employees a living wage, then it'd be nice to do so. The other feature of that, though, is the chamber has also agreed to help promote this earned income tax provision that's part of our task force's work, which allows what I call the working poor, people that's making maybe less than $25,000 a year with a family of three or four, that they may be eligible to get a tax credit back from the government, you know, that if they apply.
Oh, that'd be great.
If they are a single-headed household with a child or two or three children, they may be eligible to get really $2,000 or $3,000 back from the federal government. So, we want to make sure that people pay attention to that, and we're going to have a news conference probably later on this week to talk about some of that.
Wonderful, great. Tell me, there's, you know, a lot of work going on down West Third Street, which is in the Wright-Dunbar Business District. You want to touch upon that a little bit?
Yeah, really, the Wright-Dunbar project has been a major, major success. You know, we have, that's been one of the neighborhoods that had been kind of languishing for the last 30 years, really since the 1967, 68 riot that we had here in Dayton, Ohio. But now, it's had a rebirth to the point where we have built at least maybe 12 to 15 new houses there. The average value is about $90,000 to $100,000. People are buying in that neighborhood now. We were now focusing on the commercial sector of it, which is, you know, from James McGee Boulevard to Evan Moses, where we've hired a guy named Goody Gillespie as what we call the Main Street Manager. He has responsibility for inventory and all the property down there to see whether we can encourage people to kind of relocate. The very first business that has kind of come back to the old neighborhood is a WDAO.
I heard about that, yeah.
So, they're going to be right there on West Third Street.
I understand they're going to have like a big window, and people can actually see them broadcasting right from the street.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, that's kind of exciting, but there are a lot of people that are now contacting Goody Gillespie saying, hey, I went in. I went into West Third Street. So, we're kind of excited at least about that whole project, and also there's the work of the 2003 Committee that's really preparing for the 100th year anniversary of light, you know, for the year 2003. So, they're busy trying to get, you know, get Third Williams ready for all of that because they expect thousands of people to kind of come visit the neighborhood of the Wright Brothers as well as Paul Lawrence Dunbar. So, we're really kind of geeked and hyped about all that good stuff, but it's all part of the Wright-Dunbar revitalization efforts.
Great, wonderful. I hear a lot today, talk about your running, rerunning for office, maybe you would, maybe you're not going to, maybe you've had it with it. So, tell us.
I've had it.
You've had it with it. So, tell us, what are your plans?
Well, it's not plans, it's certainly I had to run for reelection.
You are going to re-run.
Oh, yeah, this is really my, my second full term, that as you may remember, that I ran in 1993 and served out the term of Mark Henry, you know, which is a two-year term, and then I ran for reelection in 1995 and won, so that tenure is up, so I'm ready for another four years. So, I'm getting prepared now, and there may be a primary, there may not, but either way, Commissioner Neal and I are committed to serve this community the way that we've served it the last five to six years.
Great. Now, several people over the last three weeks have lodged complaints. I can't turn on the radio without hearing a complaint. Do you know what that complaint might be?
Probably, probably snow.
Yes, they said that.
But if they're complaining now, they're somehow, they may not be into nature.
No, they're not complaining, they're not complaining now. They're not complaining now, but they really were complaining about the streets that, why didn't the city get out there early enough and get the rose plows so people could get out?
Oh, you know, I don't agree with that, but the first thing is that we, that we have some very dedicated street maintenance people that did a great, great, outstanding job, given the kind of snow and ice that we had. I've been in Dayton for most of my life. I can even remember the 1950 snow, which probably, you don't probably remember that, you probably twinkle in your father's eye or something, but...
No, I don't remember 1950.
The snow was huge, but there wasn't a lot of ice with it, I understand. But we had ice that was really compounded by the snow, and then it kind of went away and then it kind of came back. So, given all that, though, the city of Dayton spent something like a million dollars in terms of, with, in terms of the personnel as well as the materials, the salt and stuff to kind of keep the streets clean. So, I guess it's more than six, more than maybe six in one hand and six in another because I think we certainly did a great job, and we obviously didn't get a chance to do all the side streets that people went, but I think all the major streets and then some of the secondary roads were done.
How much is...
I've not had any kind of complaints for that, and I think I've not had many complaints at all.
Okay. How much money is allocated, is allocated to street, to clearing the streets? Is there a lot of money?
Well, there is, for instance, it comes in the public works, you know, and that's, and that's one of our third-largest budgets inside the city, but we have a, at least a super crew that's been working almost around the clock to do that, but it was one of those special, exceptional times.
I didn't expect it.
You know, I can recall, I mean, can you recall when we ever had that kind of ice and snow here in Dayton?
No, not all at once.
Yeah, yeah.
Not over a continued period of time.
Right, but school was out for almost like seven, seven to nine days, not only here in Dayton, but throughout the whole Miami Valley. So, it was a pretty severe storm warning, and I think we were, and it's one of those categories for, you know, for a severe hit, so I think we did a great job.
Okay, lastly, baseball. Baseball is coming.
Yeah, well, in terms of, well, you probably know that the Reds have already signed off on it, and we have people like Chris Carter and Jeff Graham and Archie Griffin as managing some of the minority team owners, so we're really excited about that, so we should be hearing hopefully the next few weeks about maybe the Major signing off on it, too, so we're ready to go.
Okay, great. As always, it's a pleasure to have you on the show, and we can't let you leave without a box of Esther Price Fine Chocolates.
Well, well, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming on.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
The William Pace Show through the years has been a beacon of light in the Midwest, taking you to such destinations as the Navy Pier, the Palmer Hilton Palace Hotel, the German Village, the Showboat Majestic Theater, the Ohio Village, and the Crone Conservatory. There's always something cooking in the kitchen on the William Pace Show. Some of the biggest stars, entertainers, and political figures like B.B. King, Jimmy Walker, Bob Carlyle, Patty Austin, Mr. T., Whitley Phipps, and Congressman Tony